Begin the meeting today, Ms. Roby.
Roll call for the City Council meeting on Wednesday, June 3rd, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Ms. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
This morning, again, we ask that we remember all those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the meeting of Wednesday, May 20th, 2015, and bills for payment, June 5th and 12th, 2015. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Are there any requests for repository sales here today? Yes, there's one. Please come on up and give your name, address, and you could explain your request.
My name is Albert Lang. I live at 1252 Buffalo Road, and the property I'm looking to buy is 1250 Buffalo Road. It's a vacant lot next to my property.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on council to discuss this property further?
Mr. Brennan, did you want me to ask him the questions?
Yes, please.
Can you tell us what you intend to do with the property?
Yes, I plan to expand my yard and just make my property look a little better. And I've been cutting the grass for several years because it's next to a daycare, and the daycare has been closed for several years, and I've been kind of maintaining it already.
Okay. And is the condition of the property something you could build upon later, put any kind of garage or any kind of driveway, or?
Yes.
And do you think that might be a plan down the road, or?
Yes, it could.
Okay. But you would be taking good care of it. You're taking good care of it already. The purpose of us asking these questions is that we're sure that you're going to remove any blight, any unsightly, unsanitary, unsafe condition that exists on that property. You intend to take care of that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Just to take a moment, I have another question for him, but just to thank him as citizen. There's a lot of blight. We always talk about blight, and I know several people who just, they never maybe come to get the, want to purchase or buy the property, but they do do a lot of maintenance. And we don't say thank you enough, so I just kind of thought in my head, thank you and to all those others who are out there cleaning up lots and calling about, you know, unsightly blighted situations and taking some responsibility for that. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that.
Very good point. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any other questions for the repository sale today? Do we have the information on this property? Is that on the?
No, not yet. We'll receive that for the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll review that and we can discuss that. Okay, thank you so much. Before, was there another point, Mr. Jones? Yes, we will not vote on this repository sale today. We'll review the information and we'll vote at a future meeting. Thank you for being here today also. And before we get into citizens to be heard, I did want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Sonia Aronkin, who's here this morning at the council meeting. Again, congratulations and welcome to the meeting this morning. We will now have the citizens to be heard, and on our agenda, we have a citizen who have signed up, Mr. Rainey Barnes, got to speak first.
Thank you, council president, council administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. And my subject today is what is $81,732 and free coffee? And I'm thinking that maybe the subject is getting old for some of the council members, so I've asked, starting at the next meeting, that we change the subject to what is free coffee and $81,732. So we'll change the subject starting the next meeting. But what this relates to, again, is the $20,000 that council approved last July to pay a part-time consultant to organize files, the resolutions, ordinances, organize those in a more meaningful manner. I think we're coming up on now 10 months, so we've spent, I guess it was $12,000 here, $24,000. So we've come up on 10 months, it's $10,000. So we're coming up on halfway through the contract period, and I would think that we would hope that maybe half of these ordinances are close to being done, because we've only got a year left. So I thought it was ironic that nobody on council ever wants to give an update on how we're doing on those ordinances and resolutions, because now, again, we're halfway through the contract. But again, I don't know if council really cares. Is there anyone in council that really cares whether these ordinances are filed, where they can find them, or scanned? Because from a citizen's point of view and others, it looks like this was just a payback to a good friend. Some of it retired, had worked 48 years and earned a pension, that this was a payback. And the reason why citizens think that is because they saw Mr. Clem on television say that he wanted to retire a year earlier, but he stayed on because Mr. Winarski wanted him to be the clerk while Mr. Winarski was the president of council. And I can understand that. If you've never had that role as president of council, you want to, and you feel a little unsure, you want to have someone that's had a lot of experience. So Mr. Winarski stayed on an extra year, actually worked for a whole year longer than what he wanted to, because he wanted to retire a year earlier. He told us that on television. And of course, we know Mr. Clem is very active in the community and participates with Mr. Witherspoon on the basketball league program. In fact, last week when he was, the last meeting he was here. But, so again, is this really something that was serious? Because we know even one of the council member, well, the mayor, of course, was opposed to spending $24,000 of the taxpayers' dollars, because there are so many higher priority items, at least in the mayor's eyes. And even one of the council members before the vote said, you know, this is a luxury, and we can't afford these luxuries right now. And then you went on five months later, passed another tax increase to the citizens. So when you throw away $24,000 on what is seemingly just a give-back program to a nice guy, and then you pass a tax increase on four months later, I mean, what message does that send? The message it sends is that we've elected officials, at least four of them, that care more about paying back to their friends and what they can squeeze out of the city than they care about the taxpayers' dollars. And as a reminder, those four people that voted for that were Councilman Winarski, Councilman Witherspoon, Councilman Jones, and Councilperson Heran Kunczo. Those are the four council people that thought this was so important. This is more important than any other priority, that there's so many city departments looking for money, the police department, the fire department, and the streets department, and all those departments you can list, are all looking for money, are all being asked to reduce their budgets, find ways to cut. But those four council people, Witherspoon, Winarski, Jones, and Kunczo, said, you know what? It is so important that Mr. Clem earns another $24,000, because his $69,000 pension just isn't really good enough to live in the city of Erie. Like three times the average of what a person in the city of Erie makes. And again, I don't, I think it's great that Mr. Clem was able to work 48 years for the city and earn a pension like that. That's great. I'm sure a lot of people would like that. But to throw away another $24,000, what were you four thinking of? And those four people, of course, it was put on the agenda by Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, and of course, those two voted yes, and so did Heran Kunczo and Curtis Jones. What were the four of you thinking of when you did this? When you agreed with Mr. Winarski, you know what, Jim? We'll back you on this. What are you going to do for me? Is that how the council works? I mean, I realize one hand washes the other. We'll do this for Mr. Winarski and Mr. Clem, but what is it you're going to do for me, Mr. Jones asked, or Ms. Kunczo, or Ms. Witherspoon? What do I get back for it? Hey, thank you very much, and have a great day.
Are there any other citizens to be heard for today?
Morning, council.
Morning.
I got your agenda here. You hired three new policemen. $40,805, 21 there. I got a daughter that got her master's, and she don't make that kind of money. She had to go to school. Is this, have these guys been to college to make this kind of money? That's a lot of money. You're starting them out. What do the average policeman, the one that's been on the force a while, what do he make? Can anybody tell me that? You won't tell me, huh? Man, that's a, that's a nice piece of change there. $40,000 to start off? No college? They don't have to go to college? Y'all, you're not very good stewards with our money. You're giving away. My gosh, 40, that's almost $41,000. You know that's a lot of money? Then you be riding around at night, you see policemen sitting back in the dark, probably asleep, making that long money. For that kind of money, them cars should be hot after eight hours. Those cars should not be stopped. They should be moving all the time. My gosh, starting them out at 40 grand. Man. Man. Gee whiz. No wonder you float bonds and you roll over bonds. You're throwing our money away. Y'all spending money like you're reaching up in the air getting it. Y'all need to slack back and look into things. Hell, I ain't even paid my property taxes yet. I got to scuffle that up. Starting out at 40. Man, it cost me a lot of money to send my daughter to school to get her first degree. Then she wanted to go and get her master's. That was some more money. And she still ain't making $50,000. Here you starting these guys out at 40. $40,000 a year. My gosh, that's a lot of money to start somebody out at. And then you ain't teaching them nothing. You're teaching them to kill black folks. But that's going to change, I promise you. Give me liberty or give me death. You hit me, I want you to kill me. This is going to get it all over with, because I'm a vindictive individual. I try to be a God-fearing person. I know God's going to take care of all things in this time. You can't hurt God. But oh, but when he deal with y'all. And I'm not just talking about y'all. I'm talking about the leaders across the country. This vengeance is mine, says the Lord. I'd be glad when he start taking his vengeance. I hope he be not too heavy on me, because I haven't been this good guy all my life. Y'all been perfect. But I asked him every night, and I get on my knees, I ask him, I said, "Lord, forgive me for my trespasses. Give me for the hard feelings that I have for people, and teach me to love my enemies." I don't know who they are, but I know I got some out there.
Love us.
Huh?
Love us.
You know I love you, darling. Always did. Tell your husband don't get jealous, though. I want y'all to get on the ball. I ain't got a lot of time left. God let me live a long time, and I thank him for it. I suffered, but I can't complain. The fellows I came up with, I can't find 10 of them. They're all dead, and it was over 150. God been good to me. Maybe he left me here to try to straighten y'all up a little bit. I'm trying to tell you something. Now, he was talking about Mr. Clem, that money. Work on getting our kids some summer jobs. Would you do that? Would you do that? Please. You know what? When them kids get a little money in their pocket, they feel independent. I felt like that when I was a young fellow. You know, you go out and work. You appreciate things when you work for yourself. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard this morning?
Good morning, Erie City Council. How you doing this morning? That was very entertaining, and I think I was trying to regroup from the laughter. But first and foremost-
Give your name and address.
My name is Jason Seaburne, 4131 McCollum Avenue. And first and foremost, happy National Pride Month. Today's National Pride, this month is National Pride Month across the country, and this is the sixth year the Mayor Joe Senate Administration still has not signed the FreedomToMary.org Marries for Marriage Equality Resolution. For six years, I have asked him if he can sign it. Understanding the fact that we want marriage equality last year on May 20th, 2014, still, Erie is the largest city to not support marriage equality on the FreedomToMary.org Marries for Marriage Equality Resolution. That's the first thing that really upsets me. I've asked Mayor Joe Senate for six years to sign this, and Erie, Pennsylvania is still the largest city in the Commonwealth not to sign this resolution. Second question, I've asked Mayor Senate about this. I would like to know, and I'm requesting that Erie City Council this month seriously think about, at the end of the month, I can bring my pride flag down to be raised outside these doors. Mayor Senate allowed the UN flag to be waved from when Gannon University had their model of UN here. Now, I asked them this question. If you're going to raise the model of UN flag, the United Nations flag, why can't I raise my flag? Because I'm a citizen of the city of Erie, and I am proudly and openly gay. For six years straight, he said to me, it may be discriminatory to other people. Well, it was discriminatory that I didn't have the fair and equal chance to have my flag being raised. Yet we have Gannon University's UN flag being raised, but not mine. I'm getting sick and tired of Mayor Joe Senate slapping my face all the time whenever I request just to have the city of Erie recognize the LGBT community in this town with our flag being raised. I am the co-director of Erie, Pennsylvania's chapter of the National Flag Foundation, and I've been taking our red, white, and blue all over Erie, and the feedback is amazing. But as a gay citizen living in the city of Erie, when my flag cannot be raised, it's a slap in the face. Allegheny County, Philadelphia, in Allentown, in State College, in Harrisburg, they all raised the pride flag during National Pride Month. And Erie, Pennsylvania is the only city that has not done that. I would like to know, and I would like to put a request in to my friends on city council, at the end of the month, when you have the end of the month, city council, if you could please recognize the hard work of the LGBT citizens in the LGBT community with me raising that flag. It brings pride to the citizens across Erie, and it will bring pride back to the city, and that is one of the reasons why Erie is 57 out of 100 with the Municipal Equality Index that I presented to you last month. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to speak? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard this morning? Okay. Hearing now, we want to start the rest of the meeting on the first ordinances for final
Introduced by Mr. Mersky, Council File 15917, Official Ordinance Number 152015, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $25,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the West 38th Street-Peach Street Traffic Signal Improvements. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15917, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 15 of 2015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 15 of 2015 by yeas, seven, nays, zero. Council File Number 15918, Official Ordinance Number 162015. An Ordinance Designating the Center Portion of McCollum Park Located East of McCollum Avenue and South of East 26th Street is Larry R. Fabrizi Dog Park in Honor of Former District Justice Larry R. Fabrizi. By Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Mersky, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15918, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 162015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 162015 by yeas, seven, nays, zero. Council File 15919, Official Ordinance Number 172015. An Ordinance of the City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a guarantee agreement with the Erie Parking Authority in compliance with the provisions thereof, approving the issuance by the authority of 3,560,000 Guaranteed Parking Revenue Bonds Series of 2015, repaying all inconsistent ordinances directing the proper officers of the city of Erie to take necessary actions, and further directing that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. By Mr. Kotowski and seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunczo, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15919, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 172015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 172015 by yeas, seven, nays, zero. Council File 15920, Official Ordinance Number 182015. An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $8,626,903.93 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, General Obligation Bond Fund 2015. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Winarski, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15920, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 182015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 182015 by yeas, seven, nays, zero.
Ms. Roby?
Yes.
Just, I made a mistake, and I wanted to correct it. I was supposed to abstain on number three because of PNC, so I don't know, do I have to redo it, or can I abstain?
Okay.
All right, just mark it that I abstained. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I abstained the first time, and I apologize.
Okay. Not a problem. Okay, ordinances for first reading. Council File 15921, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $604,751 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Home M15 Projects. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunczo, that Council File Number 15921, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. Council, City Council read and adopt File Ordinance Number 15921 by yeas, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council File Number 15922, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $254,036 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG 15 Projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Number 15922, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Council File Number 15922 by yeas, seven, nays, zero, on Council File 15923, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $2,806,751 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, $130,016.62 reprogram funds from previous community development block grant years, and $25,776.38 program income for a total of $2,962,544 for the fiscal year 2015 projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunczo, the Council File Ordinance Number 15923, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15923 by yeas, seven, nays, That'll take us to new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
We have a second, Mr. Kotowski.
All right, voting on the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones.
I'm sorry, do we have any separations? I'm sorry for asking that question.
Oh, okay. Separation, sorry about that.
Is there any separations, any items following?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to separate number one under new business for explanation, and we are pulling number three under new business, and I can explain that as well.
So number one, and we're pulling three, both in new business.
Pulling three, keeping one, just separate.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Okay, now voting on moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Heran Kunczo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
We're going to have the discussion on one, Ms. Kunczo, for new business, number one.
By Mrs. Heran Kunczo and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that upon the recommendation of the city of Erie Water Reserve- Erie, that upon the recommendation of the city of Erie Water Reserve Fund Investment Committee, the city council terminates International Equity Managers Turner Investments and Thornburg Investment Management effective June 3, 2015. Discussion.
Mr. President? Thank you. Just to explain what's going on here, we have our Water Reserve Investment Fund, which is used to fund capital projects for the city. That money is managed by a lot of managers that also piggyback on the aggregate pension board's fund managers. The aggregate pension board did international manager search the last several months and recommended that two of the current fund managers be terminated for underperforming their benchmarks. So, the Water Reserve Investment Committee met last week and agreed to follow along with the recommendations of the aggregate pension board to terminate those two international fund managers and instead hire two different managers, one being item number two on the agenda, Van Eck, and the second, the reason why number three is pulled is because the Victory Capital was recommended for the Water Reserve Fund but was unable to pick up the Water Reserve Fund. We have a different type of fund than the aggregate pension board. Aggregate pension funds obviously being retirement accounts for the city employees, but the Water Reserve is a capital investment account, and so with different rules that we were not able to go into Victory Capital. So, we have pulled that item from the agenda and we will have a waive the rules to replace that. But these will be international funds. We do have an investment policy statement that's been adopted by council back in 2009, which we do follow very closely so that we have funds in all different type of categories so that we produce the best return on investment for the, for the Water Reserve Fund. So, so item number three will be pulled, but that is the nutshell on items one, two, three, and four. Do you have any questions? Let me know.
Any questions, any questions on council? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Roll call, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. And then we have the waive rules on the substitute for item number three that was pulled.
We'll vote on the waive of the rules.
All right, voting on waive of the rules, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. By Mrs. Heran Kunso and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that upon the recommendation of the city of Erie Water Reserve Fund Investment, Investment Committee, that city council hires Vanguard to manage an index fund that closely replicates the international developed markets for the city of Erie Water Reserve Fund effective June 3, 2015, for a period of three years, expiring December 31, 2018. Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Roby. Let's start today with my reports, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity of visiting Quality of Life Center this past week, matter of fact, Monday, visiting with Mr. Gary Horton, who gave me a tour of his facility. And I was impressed with the new Americans, as he called them, and the rainbow-type coalition of individuals from various countries learning English as a second language. There was approximately 15, 18 individuals, adults, in that particular class, and each one addressed me in their broken English way, but yet I was able to understand what they were saying. You have two people running that organization. And my point of telling you this is very simple. I know that Mr. Horton, and we have spoken about it many times, and again on Monday, the mode and style of presentation when you are asking for help need to be tapered down. And, but we have to sometimes look beyond the feeling that he expresses and how he expresses, and look at what is being done for individuals. He is working along with JFK as well. So, I did say to Mr. Horton that I will be back out there to continue to watch and monitor the good things he is doing, and hopefully the requests and mode of requests and his presentation for help will change. Because I was very honest with him. I said, "All the hollering goes in this ear and out this ear, and what you want us to know and hear, we don't hear because you're hollering. You're demanding. You can't bully money from people." But he is doing a good job out there. It's just Gary and another young lady who gets paid, the rest of the staff is basically volunteers, and they're doing a very good job out there. So, I told Mr. Horton I was going to mention that. Housing authorities doing a very good job under the direction of Mr. Heran and his staff. We have no problems at this particular point in time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Murzky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. Summer rec pamphlets have come out, and there's plenty to do, and we just voted today on many of the contracts for the summer rec program. Summer rec program keeps kids off the streets all across the city. I encourage the parents to take advantage of these free opportunities to provide programming for your young ones, your children during the summer months. It's really some fantastic things going on across the city. Floodlights Theater, or Footlights Theater, rather, all across the parks, the Y does the program, and of course, Mr. Witherspoon has the Spoons League. So, there's a lot to do with the summer rec program, take advantage of that. Also, in that packet was the Sounds of Summer. Many of the homes across the city have music for free. I said Erie's probably, per capita, one of the best places to provide free entertainment, both from the city and from the private sector. So, take advantage of those things. And along those lines, I attended the Troika Russian Festival, the kickoff of the summer festival season in Erie. A lot of ethnic festivals, a lot of summer festivals. I know the Juneteenth Festival's coming up this month, so take advantage of those as well. I also attended Bishop Brock, United Way, and the Union Building Trades, hosted a father-son luncheon on Saturday, and a job fair at the Victory Christian Center. It was jam-packed. I want to thank Bishop Brock, Ron Oliver from United Way, and the trade unions for presenting that. A lot of information was provided, a lot of opportunities were provided. One of the most interesting things that the employers were saying is that, it's not that people can't get the jobs, it's that young people today have a hard time keeping the job because the minute they get corrected, they quit. The minute they're told to, you know, change their behavior, they quit instead of taking the constructive criticism and sticking with it. And so, as parents, we need to teach our kids resilience and make sure that they don't just quit when they're corrected, make sure they take that and use it as a learning opportunity to improve themselves. And finally, from the Convention Center Authority, Seawolves started their season, they're doing very well, and they're looking for improvements throughout the season with the ballpark. They did put in a new PA system this year, and at the Convention Center, they're looking to expand their amount of conventions that are coming in. They do have a packed schedule for the summer, so that's good because summer is when Erie, that bayfront is highlighted. And construction continues on the Convention Center parking deck and the hotel down there. So, that's all I have to report today, thank you. Oh, one more thing, I did want to welcome Michael Victor to Mercyhurst University. Welcome home to Erie from Lake Erie College. Looking forward to working with him in that southeast Erie neighborhood, and I'm very impressed with what I've seen from his work in Lake Erie, and hopefully he can do just as well at Mercyhurst University.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky. Ms. Kunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things to kind of inquire about. Ms. Beck, do you know, are they doing the downtown police officer foot patrol this summer?
They are doing the beat officer, and I believe they are shifting the hours, so they may be walking the streets a little bit later into the evening. There was talk of having two officers, but I believe it is one officer that they're shifting that, the hours. But yes, they're out and walking around.
I know the businesses really appreciate seeing the officers on foot, and I have heard, unfortunately, a couple of incidents in the downtown area recently that certainly give me rise to hope that we have police on foot downtown.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of the police officers, one of the citizens mentioned about the salaries that are on the agenda for the probationary patrol officers. These salaries are set by the union contracts, so they aren't something that we can pick and choose how much we want to pay. So, those are figures that are in the union contracts, just so you know. We talked a little bit about the Water Reserve Investment decisions that were made today. These decisions go along with our goal to have at least a 7% return on our invested funds each year for that water reserve. We do take 4% of the value of the fund every year to give to the city administration to use for capital investment items. So, the fund is over 10 million, so they should be getting a nice check at the end of the year to use for capital needs. The other thing, Mr. Murzky mentioned about the summer rec program, and he talked about a lot of, highlights some of the things that the, that citizens can do in the summer in the city of Erie. I did want to mention the swimming program. I think that's really big for me, it always is really big for me. We live by a lake, we need to make sure our young people know how to swim for their own safety. And there's a couple of things that are going on this summer with swimming that I noticed, and Ms. Beck may elaborate on it, but one is that they always have the Brian Lee Causeby Learn to Swim program. They have that at Strong Vincent and at East High this year, also the Roger Young Pool. And also, there's, looks like a new program called Safety Around the Water, so kids can really learn how to be safe around the water, and I believe that's out at the Roger, Roger Young Pool, also East High, Columbus Park, and Bayview. So, these are great programs, and please take advantage of the free programs to make sure your kids are safe around water. And that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending the Water Reserve Meeting with Councilman Kunso, and we, things are progressing very well with that. Also, attended the O&amp;E Pension Meeting. The funds are doing well there, and the fund is progressing very, very well. And I attended the airport meeting. There's not much to report there, new than what I reported last time. They're still working on new service, and while we were there, they actually had runway shut down due to a small aircraft, gear hadn't broken on the runway, so it held up the flights for a few hours. But the calm and coolness with which their staff handled that problem gave me a lot of confidence because, you know, it would have been a major, if it had been a major airline, it would have been a real problem. But any aircraft having a problem like that is a problem, but it's good to know that they can handle it. And I've received a lot of phone calls about, well, it was on TV about the sewers, and I appreciate if the administration could send council an update on concerning the claims against the city. Just an update as to what their complaints are and what's being done. I don't know how to answer them. I'm not a subscriber to the Erie Times right now, and I don't always watch the news at night, so I'd like a little update just on, you know, how many claims are involved, what's being done, what the problems are, just so council, you know, knows what's going on.
I'll have to get that from the solicitor.
And on another issue, I received numerous phone calls about the trash situation along East 38th, and I just got a text from a gentleman yesterday that lives up on Pin Oak. There's a mattress that's been there for three weeks. I had some to top my hill there for about three weeks. It got to the point where, I don't know who kicked it over, I was going to do it, but it was actually blocking your sightline, even though it's a small dresser drawers. We can't have it sitting on the sidewalks. You have TVs laying there, mattresses, and I keep hearing that the office is complaint-driven. Well, I'm complaining, three weeks ago. Now, I got answers from Rob, but it seems like the landlords have a cavalier attitude. I got one that answered them, said, "Well, I'll get to the problem when I can, by midweek." It's unacceptable. Mr. Plermo will have to act quicker." I'm sorry I mentioned his name. There's other gentlemen, okay? The kids, we got to do something about our spring cleanup because it's not, it's not working with the college kids. They're leaving a week or two after our cleanup. Nobody's approaching these people and telling them that, "Hey, we're not going to be picking up TVs, couches." I never knew there were so many couches in Erie. Arthur Schultz must be going nuts. But, I mean, you know, they're all over East 38th Street, they're not moving, they're growing, actually. And it's getting embarrassing because the people that live up there are complaining to me, and it's not only that neighborhood. Take a ride around any part of Erie and take a good look. So, I mean, code enforcement has to get out, whatever we have to do, whether we have to change the ordinances, I will push for it because you can't have it anymore. Our city's starting to look like a third-class country after that, you know. It just, it's not something you like getting up every morning and looking at. So, I'm, you know, I'm done ranting, but see if we can light a fire on them. We got to do more than just, you know, send letters out and accept their, their half-cocked answers to us. It's their apartments, their property. If I did that, they'd be all over me. I'd be in the paper the next morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski. Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning once again, everyone. Just a few items. Did attend the Port Authority meeting last week. Nothing major than other gearing up for another summer season down on the bayfront. They are putting that, or not putting, the new light is in at the Liberty Street there on the bayfront. Although another light in the city may not be a welcome thing, but they have that walkway that they put across from the bay there, so it is a safety issue, and it gives more access to the bayfront from the other side of the parkway there. Following up with the summer jobs program, or the summer parks program, the rec program. I mean, there's so many opportunities, and it takes so many individuals and sponsors to make this happen year after year. The city puts a lot of money into it. We have great sponsors with the Y, PNC Bank, Erie Bank. There's a lot of opportunities there for the youth to do something during the summer, as well as it creates roughly 150 jobs that, they keep coming to council, "We need job creation or summer jobs." Well, this summer program that has been going on for a long time does create jobs, and it takes a good administration and a good partnership to make this happen. It's good for the elderly with the music, it's good for the youth with the sports activities and the theater. There's a lot of things that are good about this, as well as it gets some of our youth jobs for the summer to put a little change in their pockets. So, once again, thanks for the effort from the administration and the sponsors, and we look for a great summer there. The only other item, my daughter Marie graduating tomorrow, the last one of four, so I just want to say congratulations, Marie Winarski. She's graduating from Northwest Pennsylvania Collegiate Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items I'd like to comment on and bring up. Following along with what several council members have mentioned in relation to summer rec program, I just had a question for the administration through Ms. Beck. How do we, and you don't have to answer it now, of course, but how do we, or do we, chart the demographics and the numbers of the kids who participate? And I know some of them might be easier, like the theater programs and the swimming is probably more controlled, but I was more thinking, in addition to those, the park type at X Park, Burton Park or something, how many, or how do we, do we track those kids and what that looks like?
I think we do have those numbers.
Okay, I'd be interested to know what that looks like.
Call up those couple of works.
All right, thank you. Wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Ray, Ray Massing at the Parking Authority, as well as Leanne Parmenter in our department here in the city. There were some issues around some parking sign, handicap parking.
There were some issues around some parking sign, handicap parking issues that I've received calls from, from citizens, and so they were very responsive to me and helping me to take care of that traffic engineer, Leanne Parmenter, sorry, helping me to kind of resolve those issues. But what it did was actually brought up, kind of opened up Pandora's Box on some issues around handicap parking in front of individuals' homes, and there might be some interesting conversation around changing some of our ordinances in relation to that. So, for example, individuals who qualify for a handicap sign in front of, they need to know that's not their sign, even though their need for handicapped parking was the impetus to get the sign in front of their house. Other individuals with handicap placards are able to use it. It's not like they're personal. So there's some information, I think there needs to be disseminated clearly to citizens, but also, for example, citizens that have a driveway and still have a parking, handicap parking in front of their home, there's some question around the, if there's some redundancy in that service. And so it's kind of opened up, again, a box of conversation that we'll probably hear a little bit more about and may cause some ordinance adjustment in the near future. I left some information downstairs, and I'm sure, Ms. Beck, you're probably going to reference it, or, Mr. President, you may, the Sherman Williams Painting Program, so I'm sure it's on your list, but I wanted to just kind of bring that up to make sure that we have that conversation for individuals who are interested in that training, in that skill development, that trade development. Also, a couple of weeks ago, we had a study session, excuse me, with the Economic Development Department, and our consultant that we had, that was hired, and I think we were, at least I was, I can't speak for anybody else, I was positively overwhelmed with some opportunity, but also extremely challenged by what it would take to make that reality. And so it kind of sparked a series of questions and thoughts in my mind, and I'm sure it did with my peers on council as well. So if you have some of those thoughts and questions and want to dig down deeper into some more of the components of what was proposed, of course, we have the liberty to go to any department individually, but if you want to funnel some things through me as liaison, feel free to do that, and I can get some answers and bring those back to us, either in caucus session or in our general meeting, public meeting. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Kwiatowski for his more free and liberal time to attend the Airport Authority meetings and represent council. I appreciate that. That's my liaison position, and we're kind of working together with that, so I do want to take a moment to say thank you for that. We will be having our finance meeting immediately after this, or very shortly after this meeting. We have an agenda that's set forth, I believe some productive items on that agenda. We have some guests who will be speaking in that meeting as well, so we appreciate them ahead of time for their input and their support for making Erie a better place. Finally, I'll take your lead as the big guy, as I always call him, because he's older than me, way, way older than me. I want to say congratulations to my daughter, as well, who's graduating from Central High School on Saturday morning, my only girl, who's going to Cleveland State in the fall. So congratulations to Hannah Jones. I love you very much and very proud of you. Also to my baby sister, who graduates this evening from East High School, the youngest of fourteen children, and very proud of her as well. And I'm really happy for my parents. They get to be empty nesters after thirty-nine years, almost forty, when I came almost forty years ago, as the oldest of fourteen. So they, we should really have a party for them.
Oh, they will.
Oh, they will, I'm sure. And last and most definitely not least, I'm going to take a moment to say happy anniversary, twentieth anniversary, hard to believe. My wife and I have been married for twenty years. We got married when we were five, and I just want to take a moment again to say that I love you, I appreciate you, man, and for twenty years, it's been one heck of a ride, but we've got a lot more to go. So thank you very much for this time, Mr. President. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Just want to hitchhike off of Councilman Jones regarding parking. I've received just one call, but an interesting one, that lady suggests that we could bring in additional revenue, and she's willing to pay fifty to a hundred dollars a year to have the parking spot in front of our house if we create a system where she'll have a tag on her car and with a house number there, and she'll pay a hundred dollars a year to have that spot right in front of her house, because she's having problems with neighbors who own a boat, a trailer, and soon she go to work and come back, there's the boat and trailer right there. So that's a thought for additional revenue. I'm not sure of the legal aspects of it, but something we can look into. There may be more. I know they have something similar over 25th Street West Side by St. V's. They have some kind of parking regulation over there.
Because of the parking.
Permit parking. Just wanted to throw that out. It's a possibility. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Ms. Controller, Ms. Tankow, do we have any report today?
Yeah. The aggregate board met last week and approved hiring Van Eck as our new emerging markets manager, and Victory as our new international equity manager, based on the recommendations made by the investment committee. They will be terminating our current international managers, Turner and Thornburg, and all these changes should be in effect hopefully by the end of June, maybe first week of July. And I checked today, and the value of the investments currently are 233.8 million, so they're definitely progressing. And the next meeting is going to be in August, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beck, do we have any administration report today?
Good morning. Just a couple of things, Mr. President. We all know that the rec guide is out. Can't go without saying thank you to our partners, Erie Housing Authority, Highmark, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, as well as the YMCA. The new program, again, is a safety around water. It runs all summer long. Four sessions are happening at the Roger Young Pool. Please check out the guide. They're available here in City Hall, they're available at all of the centers, at the YMCA locations, and of course, online. Next Monday, June 8th, is the first of the Sounds of Summer concerts for the seniors living in some of the apartment facilities. Can't go without thanking our banking partners, PNC, First National Bank, Northwest Savings, Erie Bank, First Niagara, and Marquette. They all give a little bit to bring the music to some of these seniors who need it most. So they're great events, and we hope to see some of your faces, and certainly the public is welcome to attend all of the Sounds of Summer music series. Mr. Kwiatowski, I will work with the Solicitor's Office to get you some numbers on the claims from the sewer backup, and also talk with Mr. Zimmerman about what we might be able to do to speed up the process of cleaning up the city. I don't know that, changing the dates, I know there was discussion about the Mercyhurst area and the students that are leaving. I'm not sure if we can push it back a week so it falls into their, at the end of their term, but we'll certainly see what we might be able to do. Two new police officers are being sworn in tomorrow morning at 10:30 in room 500. Certainly, everyone is invited to attend. Their families will be there. Mayor Sinon will swear them in, along with Chief of Police Randy Bowers. Immediate advisory was sent out to everyone yesterday, so you should have that in your inboxes. Last but not least, the City of Erie Sherman Williams Homework Training Program is set to begin the week of June 22nd. Contact the Economic and Community Development Office, 8701270. Applications are available. It's basically for City of Erie residents. Housing Authority residents are also given preferential applications. It's a five-day program. Lunch is served. You leave the program with a certificate and all of the training that you need to basically start your own business to be a painter. It's a great program. Sherman Williams has been doing this with the city for nine years, so it's a great thing, and if someone's looking to be an entrepreneur, it's a great opportunity. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Mr. President, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Is there the age information?
Have to be eighteen.
Eighteen, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a couple of items I want to discuss here. I attended the Ignite Erie Urban Entrepreneur Forum last week. It was really excellent attendance. It was great to come and see everybody attend at the event. A lot of different people were there. The financing was discussed, different resources were there. Then after the event, there was a networking opportunities afterwards to really exchange cards and really meet a lot of people, so it was a great event. If anyone could not attend and they'd like to know more, T.J. King from Brideway Capital, you can give him a call. His number is 451-1172. This Ignite Erie is really a, you know, great for Erie's economy today and hopefully into the future. There's a lot of different things going on with that initiative, so we're glad to see that's going forward. Council has a study session with representatives from Emerge 2040 tomorrow evening at 5:30. Formerly destination Erie's will learn more about what their plans are and try to discuss and ask some questions. And also, as Mr. Jones alluded to earlier, the comprehensive plan, the city's first comprehensive plan, the meetings are continuing. There's a meeting tonight for one committee, and then tomorrow I'll be attending one of the committees as representative for city council. And as Mr. Jones mentioned, there's a lot of ideas, a lot of really creative ideas being thrown out there, but definitely we're trying to see what works in Erie and what we can do for our city. And last, I wanted to mention that the, as was reported last week, the U.S. Census had the population estimate was out there. I'm sure a lot of people weren't surprised to hear the estimate because of our downward trends, but I guess the point about being below the $100,000 mark with its implications to state and federal funding, I had, because of this, I had asked Mayor Sinon to challenge the estimate, and I'm working to see if we can collect the data. I'm not sure if we will make a challenge, but we're going to try to at least discuss it and see if there's any possibility, again, because of those implications. But, you know, again, I don't want to focus on that. I think the focus should be on trying to continue to make our city a better place, a better place to do business. Yes, someday, hopefully, we could reverse this trend. You know, we have much work to do with trying to find new sources of income, trying to do what we can to make our city a safer place. We have such a great potential, and we have a great city, just a lot of tough decisions ahead of us, and hopefully we'll continue to be a better place. With that, I think that concludes our meeting, and thank you, everyone.
City Council adjourns at 10:06. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski.